We'll call this Scottsboro Work Session Monday, March 18th. The order, the invocation will be given by Ms. McCarry and the pledge allegiance given by Mr. McCarry Stewart. First item on tonight's work session is the RDS around the tax with Pete Youngs and Jonathan Gerth. Come in front please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We would like some questions you just want to get when we're here. We are the company that provides revenue administration for you. We collect an audit through your sales taxes. And I've been doing so for a number of years. We're very loyal to the client hours. We believe it's been a very mutually beneficial relationship. I think your revenue has stayed steady at this part of times. And we've worked hard, I think, to help assure that. Your contract with us is up for renewal this month. And we're here to ask for your support in renewing that contract. But like I said, it has been a good mutually beneficial relationship. And we certainly would like to see it continue.
See anyone have any questions?
Oh, just a couple of things. How often do you remit the paper to the city that you claim?
As often as it comes in.
So, say monthly, it comes in monthly?
No, it begins coming in... The sales taxes is due 20th of July.
Right.
Obviously, the bulk of your money is going to come in somewhere between the 15th to the 20th.
Okay.
But if checks start coming in or online payments are made earlier than that, then as soon as we can get them processed, we'll get them into your account.
Okay.
I believe we actually run a dispersment nearly every day of the week.
Okay. You bet your dice.
Which, you know, you may have some money involved in that dispersment. You may not, just depends on whether your taxpayers are paying.
I see.
And that's, to give you just a point of reference, I say about Alabama, we also collect sales tax, make four dispersments.
Mr. Wheeler, do you have anything to add?
Ms. McCarry, just to add to that, we get money from them pretty much on a daily basis.
On a daily basis.
It's a lot quicker than what the state disperses it to cities and towns.
But we don't have to pay the state for doing it?
Um, yes ma'am.
What if we probably paid the state and they didn't have what it is?
Seven dollars and seventy-five cents for transaction.
Part of seven seventy-five?
Right, and our proposal is two dollars and eighty-four cents.
Two what?
Two eighty-four.
Okay, and we pay you how often?
We withhold.
You withhold your fee out of what you send to us?
Makes it easier for everybody. Now, I will say this too, something that a lot of folks don't realize, that we know the value of the big taxpayers, how important they are to you. You have some big box stores out here on the highway. During heavy posting time, we will have... Our folks are always looking for big checks over a certain threshold. And as those checks come in, they are moved out of the regular lockbox string. And four or five times a day, an individual will come by and get those big checks so that they can get deposit into your account more quickly. Because we understand the value of those big checks.
Right. One more question. This email that you gave me, audit feeling there?
Mr. Youngs might feel that's a question. Actually, they gave me that.
Okay, the email that you sent. The audit feeling?
Yes ma'am. This Jonathan Gerth is our vice president for auditing.
I just don't understand, I'm sorry.
If anybody can explain where it would be, Jonathan?
Well, basically, we regularly throughout the year conduct compliance audits on taxpayers throughout the jurisdictions. Now, not necessarily specifically on the Scottsboro taxpayer. Most of our audits are multi-jurisdictional, for taxpayers operating statewide. We bill for the audits based upon an hourly rate throughout the year. What you're looking at there on the ratio is basically the amount that we billed you in the past year and the amount that we collected from those audits in the past year.
Okay, I understand. I just didn't understand what you were saying.
So, you're getting a dollar and sixty-one cents back that a dollar you spent.
Okay.
Not bad, is it?
No, it's not. Thank you, you're welcome.
Anyone have any other questions for us?
Thank you. We will appreciate your consideration and your input.
You want to place the number again for next Monday night? Next item is Ron Crawford. For the additional property on real tax duty back to the county.
Members of council out here because of a recent completion of a state audit by the state attorney's office and the revenue commissioner's office. And they found an overpayment made to the city of Scottsboro for the periods of 2010 and 2011. There was miscommunication, a computer glitch. They had been corrected and rectified now and how so? But in the process, we have petitioned for return of overpayment to Mayor Potter and Mr. Wheeler. And I submit to you tonight that I'd like for you to place this on the agenda as your next regular schedule in council meeting for approval of this petition.
Mayor?
I just need to fill in a few gaps here, if that's okay, Ron. The amount was for $188,958.48 for the entire city of Scottsboro, which is money that you collect from the millage for the citizens in Scottsboro who are already not going to go taxes for two years. The millage is divided up in the city of Scottsboro. The seven and a half go to the general fund, seven and a half to the bond fund, and seven and a half to the Scottsboro City School System. What we probably need to do is, Rick and I met with the school board, Dr. Barry and a couple of their board members. We are going to divide that from the three different funds, which is almost $63,000 per fund. So, what we would need to do as a city would be to amend our budget with the $63,000, which is our portion, the general fund portion of the overpayment. The school board will get their payment to us. We met with the, I guess Randy, was he the district director?
Yes.
Of Alabama Board of Examiners a week and a half ago. They wanted their money from this first group out about four weeks ago. But we tried to work through some things and so... We asked, you know, to give it to them at the end of the month because you knew you had to come before the city council. School board's going to have to do the same thing. But we've worked out an agreement with the school board about getting their money. Their disbursement from us, and so we're going to work out the details with them. So, they're on board with, for their portion. So, again, in the bond fund, it's not a problem to get that portion out of it. So, I guess what you would need to do is to amend the budget next week for, just shy of $63,000. And you said that it had been corrected. And so, we won't have to face this again. You don't want to have to face this again.
Mr. Crawford, if you said did it late, you've done that to your property, right?
Yeah, I understand. Please, this is a question.
Dear glitch, that has been corrected.
But the audit was of the 2011, so...
Right, this year, 2012 is fine.
It's fine, good, okay.
And that money is remitted to the state and then turned and given to the state this week? Is that right? Is that what I'm understanding?
You know, what we do is we remit it to you, you know.
But I mean, as far as our payment, it goes to the state and then they send it back?
Yeah, it goes, that's exactly.
Okay.
You talked about 2010, you talked about 2011. And they didn't decide.
Yeah.
What about 2012?
We haven't finished it yet.
So, we're going to owe you again?
No, no, we corrected it. We corrected it during the audit. During the audit.
They did that.
The audit started like in last October. We were able to adjust it and fix it correctly. So, it's been ongoing. We've gone back for a while.
And Ron, also, it's not just us, but it's everyone, just about.
It's all the municipals, yes.
And you did the form, Ron. You said his money goes back to the state, and then the state sends it back to the county. Who actually gets the money?
The county.
That's how they weren't listening when they didn't get it to start with.
Well, they didn't know it either. They didn't realize they didn't get it.
Wish we was in the state and they was in our county.
There's been times when it has been a little bit like that. Maybe not this severe, but I've had overpayments and underpayments.
But it's spent on a regular basis.
But it has been stated.
Yes.
So, we're not going to hear about this again? I hope not too. That's a lot of money to take from that.
I understand.
Any other questions? Thanks, Ron. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Somebody have any questions on the agenda? The minimum budget? Next item is Roy Life, the CDVG grant.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to have a moment. Members of council, Mayor, Steve, and, excuse me, Mr. Living. They all said that. Mr. Kimmer and Mr. Wheeler. I appreciate y'all with me. Talked to you a few minutes. We continue our work to try to rehabilitate our sanitary sewer, older parts of our sanitary sewer system. We've been at this for a number of years now. And very fortunate, I was looking back, last 10 years or so, we've got about $2.5 million worth of grants that we've been able to qualify for, mostly through this CDVG program. But we've also got some through the EPA and some through the government, through the DECA. But we're working on another project, and we need y'all's approval to file for a grant, this community development block grant. It is sizable by the money. Right now, it looks like we can qualify, potentially qualify for up to $450,000. It does require a 20% minimum, a 20% lawful match. And so, our board has agreed to put in $100,000 to provide the local matching money if we're fortunate enough to get a grant. It is through the DECA's competitive grant process, so we'll have to submit our application of preliminary engineering and a number of other documents. And the state of DECA will consider it along with other communities to see which one has greater need, which one fits the most with the people, those kind of things. Part of the process is that we have to conduct a public hearing here in the next few weeks to let the folks in our community know if they have any interest in what we're trying to do. May, this year, deadline for our application. We have started on preliminary steps. Certainly, we don't want to go any further, and we shall give approval to proceed. If we're fortunate enough to be awarded a grant, then we should have it sometime in the fall, sometime around October. And then, we would finalize our plans and specifications and award a contract in early 2014 with the anticipation that we would complete the work next summer. It is, as I mentioned, for the purposes of replacing sanitary sewer systems in several different areas of town. We've done some work in these areas, but we didn't have enough money at the time to complete. Actually, this won't be enough to complete, but it will be an important step in replacing some of our old sewer systems and getting them in good shape. The streets I mentioned, I should have mentioned, are the top there, Center Street, Michael Avenue, London Street, and West Laurel. That's our target areas now, to try to, like I say, improve the system. With y'all's approval, we'll move forward. I don't talk with the mayor. I don't believe you have another application ready to go in for the spring. So, we love the opportunity to apply for it. Like I say, we'd be willing to put up the matching funds if we could qualify for the grant.
And the reason it has to come before this is why? It's because the grant is actually for the city of Scottsboro, is that right?
Yes, sir. There are many grants that we can apply as a utility board that we can apply for directly. But this community development block grant of this type technically has to come to y'all. And so, what happens is, we'll do all the paperwork, we'll do all the engineering, we'll get the project out, we'll manage the project, we'll pay the contractors, and then we'll seek reimbursement from the state. Well, actually, we'll set money, we'll put money in the pot, and Rick will pay the bills as we go through the project. It's total of about $550,000, project is what we're shooting for. Typically, a project like that would take four or five months. So, they would be drawn each month. And like I say, we've done several of these. But we, we'll have to, y'all will have to approve us applying. It'll be for the city of Scottsboro, but it'll just be routing the money to a project that involves our sewer system.
Mayor, did you have anything else?
No, and we're only able like every couple of years, is that right?
You... We can have one project open, for example, in this case. If we were fortunate enough this year to be awarded a one, then the work would actually be done next year. So, y'all wouldn't be able to apply, or another department wouldn't be able to apply next year. But once that project's completed, then following cycle from '15, you could go ahead and begin. Or if y'all got something that you want to apply for, then you can, I can, you can apply as well. For this particular grant, project sanitary sewer work generally rates pretty high because, you know, obvious nature of it, for the belt, helping fit from the beginning. Stormwater applications can also apply. But they are historically way down the totem pole in regard to getting funded. So, we've been very fortunate, like I say, the last 10 years, I believe, we've got five or six. So, it's just about every other year, we were able to get funding.
Pete Youngs have any questions for us, or? Y'all will be putting on the agenda next week for approval?
We appreciate the opportunity to do that. Give us a print in the morning.
Okay, thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Next item is Schoners Road Block, Dino Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, council members, Steve. I'm a little new at this, so y'all have to bear with me. I'm Dino Johnson, though, if y'all don't know me, and I'm the Jackson County Schoners Club. This is Larry White. He's the president of the club this year. He's given me the dues of the union that I've had for several years, doing our paper drive, handing out our papers. And our papers are not for sale, but they are for donations. And we give them out, and been doing it now for quite a few years. We've got four spots here that y'all let us do normally. And that's what I'm asking here tonight, if we could. Apologize for not being here earlier on this thing and talk to you. That slipped up on me a little bit this year. If we could get it approved tonight, I'm sure we'd appreciate it. Because I'd like to be out on the road at eight o'clock Sunday morning handing papers out. And we've got several people that's going to be out there on it. I've got right now about 14, 15 nobles. They have, most of them have already been out there and done it. We watch the traffic, that's one of the main things. And we've tried to stay as safe as we can with it. It's this nationwide thing, it's not just here in Alabama. It goes nationwide, the paper drive. All the money proceeds goes directly to the hospital. They don't go to the temple or to the center. It goes right directly to the hospital, the money does. I appreciate y'all's time tonight and everything.
Well, this is the main fundraiser for the year that I hear. I guess it's my fault that we're a little late for it, because we waited for just the last minute before we realized we hadn't done that for the answer.
I believe this has been going on for the last 20 years?
Yes, sir. Longer, yeah. Longer, a lot longer than I've been in Schoners.
I'm a living city attorney, it's always been approved, and it's never been released to the trouble.
So, will we be able to know that for your leave, or can we go ahead and leave now, or?
We have, basically.
Because if you wait until Monday, it's going to be too late for me. Put you on the spot, I know.
Let's call Mayor Potter tomorrow.
Okay. You go ahead.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
Mr. Kimmer, appreciate y'all's time.
Any questions that you have, can I answer any question for anybody?
Just appreciate talking to you.
Mr. Kimmer, I have a question. This is just a good example. Is there anything wrong with us adopting this to give the Schoners and the Knights of Columbus and the Rescue Squad? That it's just done every year until we pull it from them? If there's a problem, we can pull it from them? Or if there's a new group that comes along, wants to do it, then it has to be approved initially, but it just automatically, as long as they let us know the date so we can notify the police department? Is that something we can do, where we don't have to do this every year?
As a matter of fact, I had spoken about something like that to Mr. Stewart before me. I don't know that it's necessary for organizations like the Schoners or the Knights of Columbus and the Rescue Squad to have histories to come to us every year. For them to have to come back. And I hear something, hopefully keep that from happening.
But then they say if someone knew, they would have to come the first time.
Yeah, well, I have to clear it through the county, too. We'll be out on the four-way stops, and I have to get a permit from them. And I worry to do that, so...
Police department knows about it.
Yeah, yeah. She explained to us that the county would have the permit number and everything, so... Appreciate y'all's time. Yeah, appreciate y'all, thank y'all for your time.
Next item is the pull door bids. Mr. Wheeler?
Yes, Mr. Stewart, thank you. The Recreation Department is wanting to replace the old sliding glass doors around the pool. And they have, we have left bids on there, we mail for, posted one, or received two back. The two bids are there on the paper that you have. One from Wilson Garage Door, Punt's, Alabama, $14,505. And Designer Doors, that is located here in Scottsboro, $15,336. With the local 3% limit, they still are not within that limit. The 3% will be $14,940.15, so Designer Doors is still above that 3%. So, littery committee recommends that Wilson Garage Doors, they awarded that bid, that is the most responsible, that's special questions. And that's on the agenda for next Monday night.
Anybody have any questions? Good on next week's agenda. We have one more item that I added. It's number six. It's a first Monday, Mr. Kimmer has written a draft. And due to the time restriction, first Monday, we're needing to try to get this done. So, Mr. Kimmer, can we read that, please?
Yes, the city currently has 12 ordinances due to first Monday. Y'all have charged me with going and trying to simplify and modernize certain areas. And this is one that I've taken a look at, and I'd like to read it. First thing we do is repeal those 12 former ordinances. The second thing is, any person currently having the right to occupy a space by virtue of a first Monday permit issued by the city shall have the right to occupy that space with his or her vehicles or displays between the hours of 6:00 on Friday preceding each first Monday to 1:00 PM on first Monday. If permit holder shall not occupy, shall not have occupied their reserved spaces with his or her vehicles or display before a certain hour in the morning. And I believe 9:30 was one of the times it was talked about.
I think that, yes, sir.
I have a blind figure, 8:30. On each day, any person arriving thereafter shall have the right to occupy that space with his or her vehicle or display on that day. Which means if someone doesn't show up to their reserve spot, and Ann Keller wants to have her yard sale there in that spot that day, she comes at 8:35, and she finds a space open, no charge. Boom, right? Since she's tired, she may be doing it. The city, the next paragraph, the city will make available maps showing all spaces permitted for vendors during normal first Monday events. All remaining spaces for first Monday, which are not reserved, shall be available on a first come, first served basis. Hopefully, we won't have to deal with the way things used to be where Keith had to basically shoot a pistol up in the air and there was a man rush. Then, no person, individual, firm, corporation, association, company, partnership, or agency shall have more than blank reserved spaces. I don't recall a number that was presented. I don't know if anyone has more than three right now.
I think that's correct. I think that's what Debbie told me, that three was the most, which that would probably walk the gallon.
Okay. Then, this is up in the air. This is in the current ordinance. No person shall display, sell, or exchange, or offer to sell or exchange any new goods, wares, or merchandise during a first Monday event unless such person personally may produce or manufacture such new goods, wares, or merchandise. Put in there if y'all like, or cannot be put in there if y'all don't like. That's up to y'all. Then, animals shall not be sold, exchanged, or displayed for something at any first Monday event. That comes out of the old ordinance, and that's something y'all can put in if you want, but you don't have to. You might have adoption services through the local panel that might be available. And you might own this animal for that purpose, the first Monday. But that's something you want to think about. I know when I was a child growing up, you hitched dogs on first Monday because people would steal them and run them down first Monday itself. And that doesn't happen anymore. Then, additionally, the mayor is hereby granted authority to establish supplemental events on the outside of the courthouse square during and after normal first Monday hours, including the authority to temporarily close city streets on courthouse square for a period of less than block hours. Then, this ordinance shall become effective any, if you follow Stephen Hatcher's adoption and publication as required by law. The main change is, there is no charge. If you're currently holding an observed spot, you get to keep it. If you're not there by 8:30 in the morning, anybody can come in and put a... They're displaying there. Any vacant spaces that are not reserved, first come, first served. The mayor has the authority to establish supplemental events on the outside of the square at the courts around sometime the first Monday's going in. They have that if they could. That's a federal. It's not actually in one of the first Monday ordinances.
Okay, well, I didn't think it was, but...
You need to check number out, right, on the mayor's...
Yes. I was thinking 12, I was thinking 12, I was thinking four, six.
It's a congregation, they're eating and things. Eight would be fine.
Eight?
I think eight.
Three spaces?
I believe, I'm pretty sure that's right. It sounded like you three spaces. I think Debbie could go back and look, and I believe three sounds... I, I, Debbie, go back and look, and I've looked, three sounds that that's the most that anyone has right now, and so that's why I'm looking for that number. And everyone who has a, who had a reserved spot annually last year, were given the opportunity to have that annual spot this year, we didn't take any new annual requests, so.
Gary, did you have?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, if you'll excuse me if I may. There's only two problems that I, I would see, everything sounds good, would be the Monday time, particularly if it falls on a holiday. I think you mentioned one PM. Uh, e- even, there are some vendors that will stay till four PM on Monday. Uh, also, new goods, for instance, there are vendors that sells knives, new knives. Uh, you know, I understand what you're saying, there has been instances up there where the police have came and arrested or the Sheriff's Department counterfeit new goods. But, so, you know, the new goods, uh, just, you might want to consider how you want to approach that and the one PM time on Monday. Thank you.
If it were a federal holiday, one PM normally, four PM, or federal holidays?
Uh, if I may suggest, why not, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Tell them, please.
Well, they can live regular Mondays and, and, don't you have to look at people trying to work on Mondays and, and limited parking, uh, and trying to conduct their business around courthouse square, and they know nothing, I would say one o'clock. Most of the time, when I, if I go around the square at that time, it's pretty much empty on a day.
Uh, I don't have a problem with doing four o'clock all the time. Because it not going to be one or two. And then, I'm not, I don't have a problem with one either. But I do have, I, I do have discussion on the new year, four clothes. That's all I heard. Hey, in regard to new clothes and new stuff like that, it's not fair if a southern hospital has to buy business licenses. And the guy sitting across the street, sitting there free, can sell them the same merchandise. So I think we need to consider keeping that, on new merchandise, because we have hundreds of people who buy business licenses to do the same thing. So we don't allow these people to do it, and I'm not so sure that's a good idea.
It's currently under, under the current ordinance, it's illegal to sell new goods. Current ordinance says. What about animals?
Thank you. We have another item newly covered. Which word do we read it?
Uh, mayor received a, uh, letter today from Mr. James D. Roberts, uh, he is on the Scottsboro Muse- Museum Commission. And, uh, he is tendering his resignation from that commission effective March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. Uh, he stated that his current job would allow him to meet the meeting attendance requirements.
And also in everybody's packet, we have the, uh, CDA board request. I'll update that on next week's agenda to approve that, I know, um, I believe they all filled through their March requirements, so I'd like to add that to next week's agenda as well to approve. Go over reports, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, we are getting in the process of, um, your service for over seventy-two, finally getting that thing out to bid, and, uh, Charles started to work on that today, so, uh, you know, we're working towards, uh, getting that out for bid and getting the work started on that just as soon as we can, um. We, uh, we're not, we're not able to reach agreement with all the property owners out that way, it will stop just short, it will stop short of, uh, of going to where we wanted to, Snugger Road, but, uh, it's just the nature of things, and so we'll go with what we got. Secondly, um, you have in your packets, uh, in the latest issue of a Business Alabama Magazine, uh, we were, Scottsboro was recognized as some, one of the best places to live in Alabama. Um, there were five different cities that were recognized, but we won't mention names, we'll just talk about ours, but I have a copy of it in your packet that shows all of it and, um, and just, just the caption under it says, "From the northern mountains to the southern beaches, five cities exemplify the best of Alabama life, offering lifestyle, livability, likability, and livelihood. So enjoy the view and sample hospitality and meet the people, let's explore the Fab Five." So I thought that was some pretty good recognition. I will say that, you know, we were mentioning the same, or, in same article as prior, I hope that was one of the other cities, so that's a pretty good comparison to be, uh, listed among the, with them, so, uh, that's a pretty, pretty nice recognition, I think. That's all I have.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Greer?
Oh, I'd just like to thank you guys for coming, and I just wanted to commend Chief Dog and his officers as I was going home after the storm we had this afternoon, which was pretty rough. The red light was out in County Park Lot and, uh, seventy-two, and your officers were out there in the storm, wrecked in traffic, and I just want to thank you for that, I know it was not pleasant to be out there, but they're doing their job and they, they didn't look too unhappy, Chief. And just, uh, remember to recycle, and I love them.
Thank you.
Mr. Schur?
I just want to say thank you for, for y'all that came out tonight, and with the weather, uh, than today, it's been fairly nice and I sent a couple of icicles out and just need to be aware of them on the road, pay attention. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting, thank y'all for coming.